Have you got it? Do you have it? Can you get it?
I did.
Okay, okay.
Just assume yes.
I was saying that thing with you and Joe with the cordon, I thought we should probably have done it here today. The only thing to say is. Oh, I see the assessment made here.
We enjoying the holiday.
All right, good to see you. I'm gonna wait on our turn to get back, going to get some documents that we may need. How are you, Ms. Moon Reynolds? All right, all right, Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir.
You don't have. We gotta make sure you get that, man. I want you to have it. Thank you, Jim.
The 2:00 PM January 3rd session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order. And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Volsen?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and a quorum is present. Uh, we're gonna go right down the agenda and talk about a statement of purpose for us being here today. And as, uh, as is known to everybody, the purpose of this meeting is to, is for us to introduce the newly elected members of City Council and to officially take their seats today. So, uh, I'm proud to recognize those newly elected members of council. All right, item number three, the first item on the agenda is a report from the city clerk advising of the qualifications of the Honorable Joseph L. Cobb, Vivian Sanchez Jones, and Peter J. Volsen as members, uh, and Luke, well, no, as members of the Roanoke City Council for four-year terms, each commencing January the 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2026. And the Honorable Luke W. Pretty as a member of Roanoke City Council for a term of two years, commencing January the 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2024. Uh, without objection by the council, the report of the city clerk will be received and filed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number four is a resolution recognizing the Honorable Joseph L. Cobb as a member, excuse me, a member of the City Council and Vice Mayor of the City of Roanoke. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read, um, this measure in its entirety.
A resolution recognizing the Honorable Joseph Cobb to be a member of the City Council and Vice Mayor of the City of Roanoke. Whereas, the Honorable Joseph Cobb received the largest number of votes of any candidate running for City Council in the regular council manic election held on the first Tuesday in November 2022, and was therefore elected Vice Mayor of the City for a two-year term, which commenced as of January 1st, 2023, as provided by Section 4 of the Charter of the City of Roanoke. Therefore, be it resolved by the City, by the Council of the City of Roanoke, that the Honorable Joseph Cobb be and is hereby recognized to be a duly elected member of the Council of said city for a term commencing on the first day of January 2023, and continuing, continuing for a period of four years, and until his successor shall have been elected and qualified, and to be the duly elected Vice Mayor of the City for a term commencing January 1st, 2023, and continuing for a period of two years, and until his successor shall have been elected and qualified.
All right, any comments by the council? Well, let me say, Ms. Cobb, that it's an honor and a pleasure to have worked with you and continue to work with you, and we're doing it again, uh, Mayor and Vice Mayor. But, uh, welcome, uh, it's a well-deserved honor. And, uh, you've, uh, been a mainstay in this city in a lot of different ways, folks. But congratulations, and welcome, Roanoke City Council.
First of all.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, let's give him a hand. Anybody else? Joe, you're always welcome to say something if you choose to.
I'm glad to be back.
Okay. All right. A resolution recognizing the Honorable Patricia White Boyd as the Vice Mayor, uh, a resolution recognizing the services of the Honorable Patricia White Boyd as Vice Mayor of the City of Roanoke. Does a.
Mayor, we need to vote on the, the, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Oh, I thought it was automatic, man. All right, we got the resolution. Uh, are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volsen?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk, and I look forward to working with you again, Ms. Cobb. All right, item number five is a resolution recognizing the services of the Honorable Patricia White Boyd as the Vice Mayor of the City of Roanoke. There's a resolution?
Move the resolution.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read that measure in its entirety?
A resolution paying tribute to the Honorable Patricia White Boyd and expressing to her the appreciation of the city and its people for her exemplary public service as the Vice Mayor of the City of Roanoke. Whereas, Patricia White Boyd was elected as Vice Mayor in November 2020. And whereas, Patricia White Boyd has worked diligently for the citizens of the City of Roanoke during the past two years as Vice Mayor. Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Roanoke as follows. One, council adopts this resolution as a means of recognizing and commending the many services rendered to the City of Roanoke and its people by the Honorable Patricia White Boyd as Vice Mayor. Two, the city clerk is directed to forward an attested copy of this resolution to the Honorable Patricia White Boyd.
All right, under any comments by members of council? Vice Mayor?
Trish, you've been an amazing Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. White.
You really have, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that I, I think the community is very well aware of. But, um, well, three things. My shortlist. One is, uh, you came in as, as an appointed, uh, member of council, and you jumped right in and were right at work, and then became elected, and you continued that, that excellent work. You really helped lead the charge on the city having, uh, the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, and your leadership in that has been exemplary. That process is continuing to unfold, and we're seeing some of the evidence of the good work that's being done. You were instrumental in advocating for the change in election dates, which saw what we all hoped for was a greater turnout and more people involved in deciding who their elected officials will be. And then finally, I, I just want to commend you. I know some of this was your role as Vice Mayor, but a lot of this was your own personal passion. And that is, uh, working so hard to bring, um, not only the story and the hidden stories in Roanoke, but bringing to life, um, the legacy of Henrietta Lacks. And, um, being able to meet some of her family and to hear just how incredibly important that was, and doing something that no other community had done, which was actually asking their permission and what they would like to see happen. And I think that's a commensurate of who you are as a person and who you are as a leader. So I just wanted to personally thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, appreciate that.
Any other comments? Well, just let me thank you for your service as Vice Mayor. And as the new Vice Mayor Cobb mentioned in his comment, you have really made an impact in our city in so many ways. And I want to thank you for your hard work, your commitment, your dedication. You're willing to meet all times of year to meet, to, to get, to talk through issues, uh, adjusting your schedule. Most people don't know that you are a businesswoman out here. And, uh, that keeps us going, but we want to thank you. You've been an asset to our city, and will continue to be, it will continue to be. You know, we're not saying goodbye, but thank you for your service as Vice Mayor. And, uh, I look forward to working with you, uh, for the next two years.
Thank you.
So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Cobb, for those kind words, and thank you also, Mayor Lee, and all of my colleagues who work with me over the last two years. Um, I am extremely excited about the new council, and I am looking forward to moving, uh, the city forward with our new council. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Did we give you a hand? Oh, give him a hand, let's give him a hand. With each passing birthday, as I'm having to write a few things down and make sure we do it. But thank you, thank you, and thank all of you. All right, item number.
We need to vote, Mayor.
Man, it must be happening to me, man. All right, let's vote on it, please. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volsen?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you, Trish, for your work.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, item number six is a communication from the mayor's office recommending certain committees and assignments for the members of council. Please note that, um, this has been forwarded out to council members. I don't see the need to go through in this, go through this all, that, uh, I have a request that, uh, the council concur in the appointments. And let me say that, uh, all of us will have a very important role in these committees, because basically committees and appoint, these appointments that we make to these committees are very important to us, because it helps us to govern the city. It's an important role, and I appreciate and thank you all for your willingness to serve. And we, you should have the latest, we've had to adjust that a few times, but you all should have the latest, uh, committee assignments. All right, do we need a motion for that, Madam Clerk, or we just got to?
If you concur, and I'll call the vote, call the roll.
Motion to concur. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
But may I ask, what, what changed?
Uh, there were some members, uh, that chose not to serve for various reasons, because of commitments to other things. Some members couldn't serve in a capacity. So, I, you know, I want to give everybody an opportunity to serve, but sometimes your schedule may not permit you to do that, or your commitments to other, uh, organizations, uh, will occur. And so, we've tried to adjust that, and as best we can, and place people where we think that they can be, uh, most beneficial. All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volsen?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, all right, and thank you all. Thank you for your willingness to serve, and I look forward to, uh, a great year as we work and work with the, uh, committees and that we have out there. So a number of them, that, that makes sure that we do, uh, what we need to do for the City of Roanoke. All right, item number seven is a resolution establishing a meeting schedule for the City Council commencing January the 1st, 2023, and terminating December 31st, 2023. There's a resolution?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Uh, Madam Clerk, could you read this measure in its entirety?
A resolution establishing a meeting schedule for the City Council commencing January 1st, 2023, and terminating December 31st, 2023. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Roanoke as follows. One, this resolution establishes a schedule of regular meetings for the City Council commencing January 1st, 2023, and terminating December 31st, 2023. Two, City Council shall hold regular meetings on the first and third Mondays of each month at the following times of commencement. A, unless otherwise provided by resolution of council, each regular meeting of the first Monday in each month shall commence at 9 o'clock AM for the conduct of informal meetings, work sessions, or closed meetings. Therefore, council shall take up the regular agenda at 2 o'clock PM. Council may recess between the 9:00 AM session and the 2:00 PM session. The organizational meeting of the City Council on the first meeting in January 2023 shall commence at 2 o'clock PM, and immediately following, council should take up the regular agenda. B, unless otherwise provided by resolution of council, each regular meeting on the third Monday in each month shall commence at 2 o'clock for the conduct of regular business. The second meeting of each month shall be recessed upon the completion of all business, except the conduct of public hearings, and such meetings shall be reconvened at 7 o'clock PM on the same day for the conduct of public hearings. Three, with regard to regular meetings scheduled to be held on the first Monday of each month, inasmuch as city officials and council members will be attending the Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference to be held September 30th through October 3rd, 2023. An exception is noted herein, and the regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, October 2nd, 2023, is rescheduled to be held on Thursday, October 5th, 2023, and shall commence at 9 o'clock AM. Four, when any regularly scheduled Monday meeting shall fall on a holiday of the city, such meetings shall be held on Tuesday next following. Five, all regular meetings of City Council shall be held in the Council Chamber, Room 450 of the Noel C. Taylor Municipal Building, unless otherwise noticed through the city clerk in accordance with Virginia law, with exception of the 9 o'clock AM session of the regular meeting on August 7th, 2023, which location has yet to be determined by the school board. However, the meeting will begin at 9 o'clock AM and after recess, reconvene at Council Chamber. Six, a joint meeting of the Roanoke City School Board will be held on February 6th, 2023, at 2 o'clock PM in Council Chamber, Room 450 of the Noel C. Taylor Municipal Building. Seven, City Council may prescribe a day or time other than that established by the resolution, or a meeting place other than that established by this resolution, by adoption of a resolution establishing a new meeting day, place, or time. City Council shall cause a copy of such resolution to be posted adjacent to the door of the Council Chamber and inserted in a newspaper, however general circulation in the city at least seven days prior to the date of the meeting at such amended day, time, or place. Eight, this resolution shall have no application to special meetings of the City Council called pursuant to Section 10 of the City Charter.
All right. Any comments by members of council? Hurry now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volsen?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you all. All right, there'd be no further business to come before the council. The organizational meeting, which is what this was, is, uh, hereby adjourned, and we're gonna go right into our formal council meeting in just a few moments. All right, the formal 2:00 PM City Council session is now called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Moon, Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Volsen?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and a quorum is present. Please stand with me, I will be delivering the invocation following. I'll lead you in the prayer of allegiance. Eternally God, our Father, we come to you first and foremost to thank you for this opportunity that you've given us, and thank you, Lord, for allowing us to see another year. I ask your blessings and guidance on this council and all of those who are appointed and elected in positions of service. Go with us, guide us, and help us to make those decisions that will make this a better place for all of our citizens. And Lord, we say a special prayer today for the young man that was critically hurt in the National Football League game last night in Cincinnati. Strengthen his family, give them the encouragement they need, and let them know that you've said that you'd never leave us nor forsake us. We ask your blessings on them, and bless this city as we approach a new year. Lord, help us to face the challenges and do all that we can to make it a better place to live, work, and play. We give you praise, we give you honor, and it is in the high and holy name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody, and let me say to, to you all that are here in the chamber and those that are watching us on RV TV, Happy New Year. Happy New Year, and I pray God's richest blessings upon all of you. All right, our first order of business is presentations and acknowledgements, and we have none today. And item number three is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City council sets this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. And all matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, or recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. But this is your opportunity to be heard. So with that said, I'll ask our clerk, do we have any people signed up to speak today?
Yes, sir, we have two speakers.
All right, would you please call them in order?
Yes, uh, first speaker is Frida Cathcart, and following her, it would be Matholomew Edwards.
All right, good afternoon, Frida.
Good afternoon. Oh, don't, do I get five minutes then, 'cause there's only two speakers, or?
Yes, you get five minutes.
Okay.
Five minutes.
It was saying three, so I guess I give it. Anyhow, Happy New Year, and congratulations to Mr. Pretty and Mr. Volsen for being there, um, being here, and, uh, new council, I hope, um, a new, a new way for the city, um, to interact and engage, um, with the citizens and, um, the neighborhoods. I recently took the Eureka Park survey, um, for the recreation center there, and was really impressed, um, with the ability to give that type of feedback. I wish that our neighborhood, um, in Fishburne Park, had, had that opportunity for the improvements that, um, and changes that are being suggested where we are. One of the things I said with the Eureka Park survey was being concerned about protecting the trees. I don't know if you all have been to Juneteenth, but those trees are awesome in that park, and I would hate to see them lose. And, and I've heard so many people talk about the beauty of those. A lot of the interest in preserving that house came from outside of our neighborhood, through the Historic Preservation Foundation, Ronnie Sutton that came here before to present to you all, is from Bedford County, I had a man from Roanoke County contact me that was involved with the Historical Society, saying, you know, what can we do? Just to let you all know, back in 26, a few years ago, Ronnie Sutton had put in a proposal to the city to buy that house, and, for $25,000, and was told at that time that she would need to go to the neighborhood, and that's how we connected, and that's how we came up with this way to protect the house and not have it rezoned. I've spent a lot of time meeting with a lot of organizations and people coming up with an acceptable way to preserve the parkland and keep it preserved by the city as recreational green space, and come up with a way of preserving that building, and I really feel that that plan hasn't had a chance to really been considered. Now we're on to the rezoning of that, and, and just to let you all know, that when, there was a call for RFPs for nonprofits, and the reason why there was no response to that was because it was the lease to own, which would have required rezoning, and that's what the neighborhood strongly objects to, is the rezoning. So it's kind of a balancing between people who wanted to preserve the house, and people in the neighborhood who didn't care if the house got bulldozed, to be quite honest, they were more concerned about preserving the parkland. And I imagine as this rezoning comes up, you'll be hearing about the impacts and the worries of the neighbors that live near the park, and the traffic, the parking, and the issues that we already have without a commercial enterprise being there. So that's something I hope that we'll be able to collaborate with, and there'll be more deeper understanding about. Just to let you know, the couple that has the proposal for buying the house was reached out to three times, saying that there were people willing to finance for 0% interest, renovate the house, and that the city could lease that space to them for a coffee shop, and they never responded once to that. And, and that has left some, like, people in the neighborhood do not feel good about that. So my time is up, Happy New Year, and I imagine I'll be seeing you all around. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, city council. First, I'd like to read a quote to you. "I leave you love, I leave you hope, I leave you the challenging of developing confidence in one another, I leave you a thirst for education, I leave you a respect for the use of power, I leave you faith, I leave you the racial dignity, I leave you a desire to live harmoniously with your fellow man, I leave you finally a responsibility to our young people." That was by Mary Bethel. Today I come before you about the senseless shooting of the young men in the Roanoke City. The shooting that happened over this weekend was tragic to a young man that was trying to develop and become a part of society, a respected member of our community. The lighting in that area is very rough, the lighting across the city is hard. We have a Boys and Girls Club, a young man there that is trying to do something with it is trying his best, but we're not getting the kids there. We, as citizens, have a responsibility as our youth, to come before them and bring them to these organizations to do more. I had a chance to work with Millard Bolden and the Orange Y, when we used to do lock-ins, we used the gym up at Breckenridge, and, I mean, those young kids from the first grade to juniors, all night long, we had a blast. That got them off the street. We have lost that now. Sometimes, progress is not always good. Some of the old needs to stay. It's time to take the gloves off and get serious about our youth today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude, uh?
Yes, sir, no other speakers.
Okay. All right, we're now going to go down to, our next item is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. All right, there are two, well, now three, requests for closed meetings. Our city attorney has requested a closed meeting pursuant to Section 2.2, that's 371187, Code of Virginia, to consult with legal counsel regarding current litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Our next request, we have two requests for closed meeting from our city manager, to discuss a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry in the southeastern area of the city of Roanoke, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Sections 2.2-3711, Code of Virginia, as amended, and to discuss the disposition of leased, or leased or publicly held real estate in the southeastern area of the city of Roanoke, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city pursuant to Sections 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, as amended. So I need a motion on the consent agenda.
So move the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volsen.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the consent agenda has been approved. We have no public hearings today, no petitions and communications, and we're now down to Item 7.1, reports of city officers and comments of our city manager, and I'll call on the city manager for the briefings that we have.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and council. We had one, one briefing today, this is kind of our official beginning of the FY24 budget development, and I know everyone is excited to be, be ready to do that. Of course, this comes after the, the retreat that you all participated in previously, and of course, based on that retreat, we have already begun work on the FY24 budget internally, but this is really our first kind of public discussion as we go through, and of course, as you all know, as has been our practice before, it will continue to be that each month at the first meeting, you'll have a briefing on some piece of the budget as we work our way toward April and May for the, the formal presentation of the budget. Today's, of course, is always the same, which is, we always begin with our property values and where we are. I am pleased to say that for the ninth year in a row, properties located in the city of Roanoke have continued to experience a strong growth in value. Total values of real estate in the city of Roanoke are now approaching $10 billion, so that's everything in, that we have in the city as, as well. And based on the preliminary real estate assessments performed by the city that you'll hear about in just a moment, market values of properties in the city have increased by nearly 10% over last year's values. This increase has been led by the performance of multifamily residences, which itself has increased in market value by 15% year over year, and I think that, the strength of that market has been exhibited by recent news stories that you all have been familiar with, which include, of course, the redevelopment of the former Sheraton site, as well as the recently announced 768-unit project on Orange Avenue. I'll talk a little bit later about what these values mean for us from a revenue standpoint, but first want to have Susan and her team walk through the assessment process and bring you kind of up to date with, with that information. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
It's good to see you back, and welcome back, and the newcomers, Luke Pretty and Peter Volsen, welcome. Lots of good decisions are made here, and our office is one that gets to see firsthand of any of the construction and projects that, you know, make our city, you know, move forward, and that's what we're about. So I look forward to working with each of you again this year, and so, before I get started, there is 45,555 parcels in the city of Roanoke. I don't know if you all knew that or not, but in order for us to do that reassessment, we're charged with fair market value of all the real property in the city. It takes an amazing team, an amazing dedicated team, that have full knowledge, and I would like to share with you, the three people, these are the supervisors and managers of that portfolio for our real property. The deputy assessor is Casey Bratton, if you'll stand up. He handles the commercial property, he has a team that works diligently on all of that, it's about 10,000 properties, and then I have Cookie Hazen, she handles a portion of the multifamily property in the city. We recently took over the land book function this year, and she is managing the land book function. So very hard job, because when we close the land book in July, that is the revenue that comes in, based on what our projections are today. And I have Angela Arnold, she handles the residential portfolio. Each of these appraisers have appraisers that work under them, everything is turned in to them, and then funneled through me. Angela handles about 35,000 residential properties in the city. So it's a big job, and we just simply couldn't do it without them, and the folks back in their office right now, watching this probably on screen, and it, it does take all of us to make this happen each year. Thank you, guys. All right, with that being said, let's get to the meat of this here. We're projecting what we think the land book will look like for fiscal year 2324. The reassessment will increase 9.14%, new construction will add about a half a percent, and the total increase is 9.66% or about $851 million. Now, if you have a calculator handy, you can multiply that number by .0122, which is our tax rate, and you will see that it equals about $10.4 million. So as Bob said, he'll come back later and talk about the fiscal impact of that money, but the lower slide indicates sort of a property class. So the single family will increase 13%, the multifamily will increase 15%, the commercial remains steady at 3.5, and the total increase is 9.66. This is a slide that shows you those percentages by history. So last year, we talked about the V recovery coming out of COVID all across Virginia, this is kind of what we saw. You see where, coming out of COVID, we kind of had a dip, and now it's continuing up. If you follow the green line, you'll see that it's a 9.66%. Last year, that number was 7.83, so we're up from last year. You can see the blue line is residential, so there's your 13% right there. Last year was about 11%, and then commercial is at 3.5. One thing we've noticed, that it's a seller's market, and when you have low inventory of residential, you're gonna see it drives the price up. So that's what we found this year in our analysis. This is a slide we like to show of the new construction. You can see that if you follow the green line, it's $45.7 million that we added to the portfolio this year. Largely, that was due to the Member One headquarters being located here, the District View, the new apartments built down 460, there were two Chipotle and Tropical Smoothie down 460, Starbucks on 419, Fire Station One downtown, the branch offices relocating to the old Kroger Office Park out in the north side of town, the self-storage at Happy's, and the Liberty Trust Boutique Hotel. So those were some of the larger, total new construction. You can see that it was about the same as last year. One thing I noticed on this slide, you can see the red, how it's kind of come down from years past, but look what happened to the blue, the residential portfolio has come up. So it's a, it's a good balance, it's about supply and demand, and you're gonna see, you know, when, when interest rates drop, you're gonna see the price of housing go up, and that was largely, but I think we had a lot of good projects this year, and it's still, you know, it's still positive. All right, let's look at this one. These next two slides are geared mainly toward the residential portfolio. This slide on page five is mainly single-family housing, okay? Our assessments are data-driven, we're not pulling numbers out of the air, we don't predict what's gonna happen, we rely on our data to tell us what's gonna happen. One of the ways that we analyze single-family is by market approach, and that's property sales in your neighborhood, and we are qualified, we are only using qualified sales, and you may look at me and think, what is a qualified sale? Okay, we have lots of sales that take place in Roanoke City Courthouse. We actually go out and take a picture of each of the properties, we interview the buyer or the seller or the realtor, we find out, you know, was a pool table included, we look for arms-length transactions, sales that were, where you have a willing buyer and a willing seller, without distress. Now you may say, Susan, what is a distressed sale? A distressed sale would be like a foreclosure, an estate sale, a death in the family, and they had to get rid of it, a divorce, those kinds of things. We have that information online, the transfer of that online on the website, but we don't use it in our analysis, because the Department of Taxation tells us to only use qualified sales where you have a willing buyer and a willing seller. So let's take a look at this slide, this is interesting. In the city of Roanoke, last year- In the city of Roanoke, last year, we had 1,200 property sales. Those were the valid qualified sales. Of those, the median sale price was 200,000, or to be exact, 199,950. That's amazing. Look at, if you look at last year, it's up 20,000 from last year at 180. But if you look at the year before, it went up $35,000 from 165 on the qualified sales. So that happens when the interest rates drop and the inventory slows down, it drives the price up. And that's what we saw this year. This next slide is geared to multifamily. There are many ways to appraise multifamily properties. We use the income approach, we use the market approach, we use the cost approach. But one of the, I guess, one of the units of comparison we like to study is what is the price per unit? What are people paying by the unit? So for example, if you had a duplex that sold for 100,000, and it was two units, it would be 50,000 per unit. All right, so let's look, we divide the multifamily into two categories. The blue line is converted houses. That's what CH means. I should have put that down there. You probably don't know what a converted house is. A converted house is where you have a big house, and they chop it up into six units, something like that. Those are called converted houses. And then we have your normal duplex side by side like you're used to seeing. So the blue represents that, the green represents apartments. An apartment sale could be 10 units, it could be 300 units, but they were built as apartments, okay? So let's look at the blue line first. So if you look at 2022, you will see there were 154 units that sold last year. And of those 154 units, they sold at an average price of 94,000 a unit. The year before, we had 236 units that sold at an average price of 81,000 per unit. And then in 2020, we had 120 units that sold that year for an average price of 78,000 a unit. So it's a $16,000 jump on a per-unit average since 2020 coming out of COVID. So that was a big jump for us. All right, now let's look at the green. That is the built-as apartments, okay? Last year, we had 651 units sell in Roanoke at an average price of 79,000 per unit. The year before, we had 330 units that sold at an average price of 72,000 per unit. And look what happened in 2020. 563 units sold, but 55,000 per unit. It was a jump from 20 to 22 of 24,000 a unit. So multifamily is popular. People are wanting to buy in Roanoke. We've got lots of good things happening, and it's evident with all the new construction of the multi-units being available. So we are, like I said, we're seeing evidence of great projects firsthand, you know, through our data as well.
Susan, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Just a second.
Yeah.
It looks like there's a small town being built off of Herschberg.
Yeah.
What, are those apartments, or are they condos, or what is that?
Are you talking about the Sheraton site, the old Sheraton site? Yes, those are apartments.
It looks like a new building comes up every day you drive down the road, they got a new building coming up.
Yes, yes. And it's exciting because, you know, the Sheraton was kind of, I don't want to say dying, but it was, it had lost its economic life. That's what we say in appraisal terms. You know, when you lose your economic life, it's time for revitalization, and that's what's happening right there. And we're very fortunate to have that project. And it's unfortunate they wanted to be further along than they are, but it got caught up in the supply chain and the lack of skilled workers, and there was just so many issues. But they really are trying to get done, and we feel like by fall, it'll be, is that what we think, Casey, by fall? Yeah, to make sure, you know, if nothing else happens, so anyway.
How many are there?
Do you know, is it 336? Yeah, 336. So, yeah, it's a small city. It looks great from 581, you know, I think. So the other thing we've noticed this year, that rents are somewhere between a dollar a square foot at the low to over 250 a square foot. We just can't believe what people are paying for rents. So good for Roanoke, it's good for our city, and a lot of it is due to some of the medical industry that's here and people needing places to live. And when there's no inventory of housing, you have no choice, you know, is the other thing. All right, so I've hit you with a lot of stuff. So what, in summary, what do you need to know? We only mail notices to our citizens that have a change of assessed value. We're mailing the notices today. So if there is no change, they won't get a notice. But I will tell you that over 90% of the citizens did receive a notice. Residential is 13% increase, and that's on the average. Multifamily is 15%, that's on the average. So you think about the bell curve. If 15% is at the top, you're going to have some assessments higher, you're going to have some a little bit lower, okay? Commercial, most of the increases this year in commercial were in land, industrial land values. There is a scarcity of that right now, flex space, distribution warehouse, all of that kind of, any kind of move in goods and services back and forth, there is a demand for that. So that is mostly what went up. The total assessment change is projected to be about nine, almost 10%, 9.66, yes.
Susan, can you say what percent of citizens will receive, was it 9%?
90.
90, okay.
So most of our citizens, yes. All right, so before we leave this page and before Bob comes up, I want you to flip over to page 15 and 16. I want to tell you just, this is something I put in the addenda, and since we have a couple of new people here, I thought it might be important to kind of go over this for you. The Department of Taxation measures our performance, and they come up with a sales ratio study each year. And this is the most current study. And what it does, it takes the sales that happened in 2020, and they compare them to the assessments of 2019. So we're always behind, okay? It never can be forward. All right, so this year, our ratio is 87%. We strive to be about 95%. So you can see, when you have an ascending market where things are moving so fast, it takes us a while to catch up, and we'll catch up, and then the market might change, and we'll have to make adjustments. So if you flip over to page 16, you can see the history of this change. And I put several years on there because you can see, we haven't had digits like this since 2005 and '06. And then in 2008 is when the recession hit. It was October of 2008. And see how long it took us to get back up to those almost double-digit numbers, okay? I thought that might be interesting for some of you. All right, at this time, I'm going to pause, and I'm going to ask Bob to come and talk about the fiscal impact. And then I'll come back and share with you how to appeal our assessments and talk to you about some of the tax relief programs.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Change in assessed value for vacant land. And do you separate vacant land based on its use?
Well, we always praise vacant land as if vacant, even if it's on a house. That's the way the Department of Taxation asked us to do it. So we do have most all the vacant land changed this year, except for commercial, only the industrial did.
Okay, then could you give me the information on how much that has changed?
How much the vacant land changed? Yeah, I'll have to look that up. I don't know that number offhand.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just?
Susan, one other question.
Yes, Susan, I just have a quick question. When, like right now, the interest rates are going up. Is that going to change the assessed values enough to where we have to come back and reevaluate? Or should these numbers still be good?
No, the Department of Taxation asked us to appraise as if it was January 1. Okay. And so honestly, in Roanoke, we've seen lack of inventory, and we've seen the rates rise. But I remember my first house, we paid 12% for an interest rate. So even if at six, you know, I asked a realtor this weekend, what's the interest rates? And she said, I think they're around 6.7. You know, it's still good.
It's still not going to be enough.
It's like I said before, we react to the data, so, and we have to stop. So we, if you notice on these slides, I give you a little star at the bottom that, like, turn to page 5. You'll see, we use sales January through October. So our team is in the field. We're working as soon as hearings are over and as soon as assessments, we get, start hitting the field around April. And from April to October, we're gathering data and inspecting and doing all the stuff that we need to do to get the reassessments done. And then we come in, and from November and December, we're crunching numbers. So we haven't even used sales that have taken place from October to December. That'll be next year. So we'll make an adjustments. If the rates go crazy and the values start falling, we'll use those sales to base next year's assessment and, you know, go from there.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it's enough to make an impact right now, but I mean, unless they go cuckoo.
Well, and if you go to page 16, that's a really good question, because if you go to page 16, you can see, well, let me find it here. You know, the recession hit in 2008. We sent out a 5% increase that year. And you can see, the next year, we kind of remained stable. The next year, we remained stable. The next year, we remained stable. And it was really three years before we dropped assessments because it's based on that ratio. If my ratio's at 87%, even when things are dropping, I'm still too low. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh huh, it's a good question. All right.
So Susan always likes to step away at this point because now we move from talking about assessments kind of in the abstract to money. And so I get the fortune, I guess, of coming in and talking about that piece of it and why the assessments matter. And I guess I'd say, the assessments matter obviously to property owners because it's one indicator of the strength of the market and therefore the value of their properties. But assessments also turn into taxes, and taxes ultimately turn into revenue. So it's also important to property owners because an increase in assessment typically means an increase in their taxes as well, and for us, an increase in the revenues with it. And so, I mean, normally, we talk about this and say, assessments equal taxes, equal revenue. And why does that matter? For us, of course, and for you all, the reason that matters is because this is how, whether we like it or not, this is how we pay for our teachers, our firefighters, our police officers. This is how we pay to upgrade and repair our streets, our parks, our libraries, and operate part of our solid waste system, just to name a few. This is how we do it. This source of revenue, while it only makes up a portion of our budget, is probably the most stable portion of our budget. It does not, as Susan has shown you in those slides, it does not change a great deal from year to year, up or down, depending on economic conditions. It takes some years to go up, and it takes some years to go down, and that is essential when you're trying to actually prepare the budgets that you all have to adopt as you move forward. So the changes that have been identified, we project will result in about $10 million of additional revenue coming into the city. I have to, of course, at this point, remind you that 40% of that is dedicated to the schools. So 40%, that 10 million, goes directly to help fund the school operations, back again to those teachers and administrators and buildings and so on for them as well. Also, as you all remember from the discussion in our retreat, there are a number of items that we've already identified, top-of-line kind of things, that we know will be part of what will go toward expending actually in excess of our share of that $10 million. And just a few of those to remind you is the, our share of the contribution of the pension program that we have, and we estimate that number to be somewhere around $5.5 million for this year's contribution. The public safety compensation increases, remember, we're moving into the third phase of those and completing those, plus we have to actually carry, obviously, what we've already completed in the police department for those. We also have compensation increases necessary for the general employment base for the city employees, much as private sector is having to respond to increasing pay in order to actually retain and attract talent. We are no different, and we'll need to be doing that as well. And of course, just like all of us as homeowners and as business owners, inflation is affecting us as well. Everything that we buy, everything that we're building is costing us more. And actually, in many instances, for our capital projects, we're borrowing that money. And of course, with interest rates going up, it costs us more to borrow those dollars as well. You may recall at the retreat, seeing that one slide that we used that shows how even as these revenues increase, when you take into account inflation, we actually are losing purchasing power. We've lost purchasing power over the last 10 to 15 years, even as revenues have increased. So good news is, there is potentially more revenue as we move forward. Challenging news is that we already identify top-of-line expenses that will exceed those amounts. This is obviously not the only revenue we have. Of course, we have sales tax revenue, and we'll get support from the state as we move forward with this as well. As I have said in the past, I would much rather be standing here, though, talking about how we're actually still anticipating a growth in that revenue. And even if it's not the revenue that we would ultimately hope, it is still positive, which is a much better place to be than us moving in the opposite direction. And again, also a much better place for our homeowners and business owners to be as well because it's indicative of how strong the market is here, when and if they do become sellers of property and as they move forward and stuff. So that is my extent of this piece, and I'll come back at the end if there are any questions and want to talk, have Susan talk about. There are opportunities that occasionally there are mistakes made in the assessment process, and she'll talk about how you can actually appeal those mistakes. Thank you.
All right, so if a concerned citizen calls you, and you're probably going to get some calls, please have them call us. We're trained to talk to them. We have the data to support our values. One thing you might say is, have you checked the information on our website? Our website gets about 2.5 million hits a month. So if the data's wrong, then the assessments could be wrong. So check your information, make sure it's right. That's the reason you would appeal, and we can, our team can come out and inspect the property and make sure we have correct information on it. All right, so the number one thing you need to remember is February 1. That's the deadline to appeal to us. And then in the month of February, our team will be in the field inspecting all of those properties that appeal to us. The Board of Equalization will begin in March, and their deadline has not been set. They usually, once they are in session, they will set their own deadline, but typically, it's around the first week of April. So if a citizen doesn't like our decision, they have another avenue through the Board of Equalization. And if they don't like the Board of Equalization's decision, they can appeal to the Circuit Court. So last year, you can see, we had 213 appeals to our office. We talked to 1,400 people in four weeks last year. And we are mailing out over 2,000 more notices this year than last year. So I anticipate that number to be up. But you can see, if we talked to 1,400 people and we shared with them the data we have, and only 213 appealed, it's a pretty good number that, you know, once they understand how we do it, once they understand and see the data, then we can usually sell them. Of those 213 appeals, only 54 went to the Board of Equalization. So you can find the appeal forms online if you go to our Roanoke City webpage and choose Real Estate Valuation. There's a button that says Appeals, and it tells you about that. And there's also a button that says Forms, and that button is where you can get an appeal form to our office. We have Dropbox in the main lobby of this building. Appeal forms are also at all the libraries, and hopefully, we're happy to talk to any citizen who can't get out and needs information for us. All right, the tax relief programs. The, we do have a elderly and disabled tax relief. We also have a veteran tax relief. The elderly and disabled and the veterans are handled by our Commissioner of Revenue. Basically, it's, you've got to be 65 years old. Your annual gross income cannot be greater than 42,000 a year, and your total net worth, not including your home, is, cannot be over $160,000. So I'm sure his office will be glad to help anyone that thinks they might be able to qualify. We also have the rehab program, the land use program, and solar and energy programs. Those are all abatements that we handle through our office. All right, do you guys have any questions or concerns? Yes.
I just have one quick question about the rehabilitation abatement. Has that been going up since we've been seeing more of a demand in Roanoke? Or how is that?
That's a good question. If you'll go to, I have a If you'll go to, I have a little page for you. Let me see what page is. If you go to page 14, you can see that last year, we abated off $131 million and this year is down to 127 million. So what happens is projects come off. So they're either in a five-year program or a seven-year program. And so depending on the year, they come off and that next year, that number could be double. So it it just depends on what year they're coming on or off. But we have about 465 of rehabs in on our program right now. So that's good.
Thank you, Susan, and thanks to your staff for your really hard work. I don't know that you can answer this question, but I'm going to pose it because it's it's part of the tension I think we're feeling in the city about, you know, the goodness of seeing property values increase and the challenges of housing. And one of the tensions I hear play out is some will argue that we have plenty of available housing, but what I'm hearing you saying is we have very low inventory. And so in the middle of that, I'm curious about, do the number of abandoned vacant blighted properties, properties in our city, are, do they drag on our inventory and assessment value strength as a city? Do they have any effect on that overall value of the housing market? I don't, and I don't know how many properties we're talking about.
Do you remember how many cookie on that last vacant housing? It was only like, what, maybe 165 to 100 parcels? Yeah. It does not. In our opinion, it does not because it's, we just got the list from code enforcement. It's it's somewhere around 100 properties of boarded up, you know, houses.
So I guess that leads to another question, which may be a different department. But that is, I mean, how do we define vacant? Because I I've been in meetings where code enforcement will say, well, we have 75 properties in this neighborhood that are vacant. And if you add up neighborhoods, 125 is quite shocking to me that we only have 125.
Yeah.
So I wonder if, you know, what is the distinction between what's defined as vacant, what's defined as blighted, what's, you know, coming up on the tax sale? Maybe those are different categories. But I mean, in part, that answers my question.
Yeah.
But it's this bigger question I think we're we're grappling with as a city.
I would say the codes version of a boarded up house is a house completely boarded up. That's what we get from them. Now, our team is in the field valuing property based on excellent, good, average, you know, below average, fair, poor, very poor. So they're not boarded up. There's people living in those, you know. So we do have, but that is part of this assessment that I shared with you. And it still went up $10 million.
Okay.
So, I mean, the good news is, and that's the part, if a concerned citizen calls you and, you know, we don't get inside, you know, we we are doing walkarounds and drive bys. And, you know, so sometimes it can look different inside than it looks outside, you know. So we would need to go make an inspection and, you know, and we would change that condition, which affects the whole cost mechanism that we have. Yeah, go ahead.
Our team has listed real time. 136 houses listed as very poor and 251 houses listed as poor citywide. So you take that above 45, 35,000 residential parks and properties. That'll give you an idea what percentages are.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys back there watching us.
Go team.
So would you say, Susan, really, we do have a somewhat of a housing shortage and and these apartment complexes are certainly welcome and we're looking forward to to adding to our, to our, to our residents?
Yes.
All right, and we'll put some on back.
All right.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And we will, as said, each each, beginning of each month, we will come back with another budget briefing as we proceed forward. This is obviously the the very first one that we start with and it sets the foundation for then what we're working on over the next couple of months with the budget. So thank you very much. Thank you, Susan.
Is that the only, is that the last briefing?
It is, yes, thank you.
All right. So that's about it to receive and file. All right, we're now down to 718, which is an item for recommended for action, which is the acceptance and appropriation of the DCJS ARPA Law Enforcement Equipment and Technology Grant. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of paragraph?
A resolution ratifying and approving the acceptance of American Rescue Plan Law Enforcement Equipment and Technology Grant, funding through the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for law enforcement efforts to reduce violent crime in the city and ratifying and authorizing the execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, council members, any discussion, the comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, just so everybody kind of knows what this, what this item is. So you may recall, probably just a couple of months ago, actually, there was a, it was a release from the governor, I think he actually held a press conference regarding it, and it was his stated intent to take some of the state's American Rescue Plan Act dollars and dedicate those to addressing the increase in violence we've experienced across the the Commonwealth. And and they, from that, the Attorney General created a program which would provide funding to law enforcement agencies for fairly narrow purposes. There were a couple of different categories that they provided in a fairly quick turnaround, partly because these are American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And you all will know from our work that there is a time clock ticking with those dollars and also to get money into the communities as quickly as could possibly be the case. So our folks made application for those dollars as instructed by the Attorney General's office. And a couple, I guess, a few weeks ago, we were notified of receiving the funds. And so this grant is to complete, complete that process so that we can begin actually ordering and receiving the equipment. Each of you should have at your place the list of the equipment that was included. It's kind of odd what you got was, in your packet, what you got was the the release of information from the state. The application process was all virtual, all online. It was just through templates. There wasn't like some of the other times where there's actually an application because this was a special funding program. It wasn't set up in a way. But just wanted everyone to know that what this is and how we got to this this point. And certainly, chief and captain are here should there be any questions about the the request or any of the information that has been provided. So thank you.
All right. And Mr. President.
Mayor, I have just a few questions for the department regarding what these technologies are and and what they'll be used for and the policies that surround them, if it'd be appropriate?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, Nancy. Thank you for being here today.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year. I see the list of items, there's a tactical gear, a lot of it's communications related to technology and other equipment. But my questions really surround, if you could talk more about, what is a real-time crime center? And I'll have other questions about license plate readers, but what policies we currently have right now and whether or not these intend to use facial recognition technology and if we have a policy on the books or if we're going to be adopting the state police's model policy. As I understand, this is a non-competitive grant. So our options are really either to accept the money and use it or to to not accept it. But prior to voting on accepting it, I'd just like to understand more about it.
Sure, absolutely. I'll do my very best to try to help with that understanding. So I'll start with real-time crime center. So obviously, in the environment we are in with short staffing, the intricacies and difficulties with prosecuting cases and identifying crime, part of the next generation law enforcement is real-time crime center. You've heard me probably say many times before that that my most comfortable posture is a proactive posture versus a reactive posture. And that's what a real-time crime center does for us. It arms the officers with proactive information to try to get in front of crime happening instead of simply responding to a shooting. So in a real-time crime center, and I could think of other jurisdictions that currently have one, like Winston-Salem, in a real-time crime center, you would have technology sort of like ShotSpotter where, you know, you have shot spotters around the city and when those shots go off, you know, you have people in a real-time crime center who could look at cameras that perhaps are in the area, identify a car that may be leaving, and the officers are armed with that information as they are responding to the incident versus waiting to officers get there to maybe speak with the witness to say it was a black car with tinted glass and now we are 30 minutes behind the curve. So that is a very elementary example of a real-time crime center. You generally have crime analysts, police officers in a real-time crime center to work together in that environment.
No, but are any of these ShotSpotter technology?
We do not currently have ShotSpotter technology.
And none of that's being applied for us for ShotSpotter either, is it?
That is correct. We are not applying for ShotSpotter. That was just one piece of technology.
Well, so as it relates to license plate readers, I see that there'll be six that will be purchased and it says that they're portable. So will these be kept in particular locations throughout the city or will they be moved around and where will decisions be made as to where they're placed? And then a broader overarching question is, so I understand that this grant was non-competitive and goes to eight cities in the Commonwealth who are all doing very similar things to what we're doing here. Another locality referred to a rather large recurring cost that comes with these technologies. And I see that this is all one-time request for funds. I wasn't sure, what will be the recurring cost to our locality beyond the the contracts that are mentioned for the service for the license plate readers?
Sure. That's a great question. And I can start out by saying, when the mayor and I attended that press conference that Bob alluded to and he announced that he would be extending ARPA funding to local jurisdictions, one of the first things that myself and my executive team did was really research what the reoccurring cost would be. So we had a great idea of what reoccurring cost would be, mostly through maintenance costs for technology. So that is certainly something that we believe that we can handle. They're not tremendous costs. There is cost associated with maintenance as you move forward with technology. One of the other things we did was include our staff in the decision-making process of what items that they thought would help them fight crime, specific emphasis on violent crime. So yes, there are, to answer your questions, definitely some reoccurring costs, but we certainly believe that that can be incorporated in the business process that we have through supplemental budgets and adding on to our budgets without creating a overly cumbersome and burdensome budget for our city, which is one of the reasons why we do not currently have ShotSpotter. Very, very expensive piece of equipment, very, very expensive ongoing yearly maintenance costs as well.
And on the the question of the, where will decisions be made to where these cameras will likely be located and will they move around or will they be stacked?
Yes. So fortunately, we are an agency that have five crime analysts and an embedded criminologist. And I say that to say we follow the crime. We go where the crime is occurring or we where we anticipate the crime is occurring. And that's where I think these pieces of equipment would go. For instance, you, I am sure, have heard, we're having issues on Williamson Road with a particular establishment out there. We have had several fights, we've had several shootings, we've had several shots fired in which no one was hit by gunfire. However, when our officers get there, many times there is not much cooperation in terms of what vehicles were involved. That would be a place in which we would deploy license plate cameras to capture the vehicles that's leaving there so it can be an investigative tool for us to follow up and try to figure out who was involved, who was present, who is willing to talk with us. These are not facial recognition cameras. The only thing that they have the capability of doing is capturing a license plate. We are also governed, obviously. There's the 28 CFR Part 23, which ensures that, or is guidance from our federal government on criminal intelligence, how we maintain that. License plate readers are nothing new to us. We've always had license plate readers during the time in which I was away from the city before coming back. That equipment became so obsolete and outdated and had reached its end of economic life. Did I get that right? That unfortunately, we could not use those cameras. They were the traditional trunk-mounted vehicle license plate readers. Obviously, the technology has advanced in such a way where they are portable now and we can deploy them throughout the city based on where the crime is happening and where we think the crime is going to happen, according to our crime analyst and our embedded criminologist.
So I understand there's currently not an operational license plate reader policy by the department that's being looked at, being reviewed with these purchases?
Yes. When that piece of equipment went away because it was obsolete, we just inactivated that policy because it was no longer applicable. We didn't no longer have the equipment. However, that is the foundational policy in which we will use. What my team currently is doing, instead of just blowing the dust off of an old policy, is we like to send it through legal review, through Tim's office and make sure that there isn't any new case laws that may govern how we deploy license plates, cameras, how long we keep the information, if we keep the information at all, and what ways can we use it as an investigative technique. So instead of just retrieving it from the archives and putting it back in the policy book, we're using these 30 days of January to make sure that it's legally sound.
The thing that gets to me, to my final question, at least on license plate readers, that I'm not sure if I can say the name of my, of the vendor, but my understanding is that this particular vendor has an optional trans, license plate transparency portal and they also have another option within that where the data for requests for how many cameras are out there, how many queries are are done, that can be made publicly available to be audited. And I was wondering if the department is looking at participating in that program or not participating in that program? Because part of it also publicizes what is the policy for license plate readers? Because I think with a lot of this emerging emerging technology that comes through, there are a lot of questions that people have about how it operates. Is it, is it somewhere in a place where someone doesn't have a reasonable expectation of privacy? Or is it, can it be used for Immigrations and Customs Enforcement and traffic enforcement? Or is it primarily for investigative purposes? I think these kinds of tools will give people better understanding of how they operate and give them more security in their own privacy without infringing on the ability for the police to operate and do their work. So I was wondering if the department would consider at least involving themselves in those parts of this program, as will probably be more questions going forward.
Sure. That is nothing or anything different than we have not already participated in. Obviously, we are proud, excuse me, of the fact that we are a very transparent department and we certainly wouldn't have any issue with that. I am sure that there is additional cost for those additional modules, but certainly if you in part is willing to invest that cost, we're certainly willing to participate.
My understanding, these are automated and should be free with the way that it is set up. I'd have to double check and be corrected on that fact.
Yeah, that's not my understanding, but.
With there only being six cameras and this company also has a private function that allows neighborhoods to purchase, would there be any kind of efforts to allow neighborhoods or other businesses or organizations to purchase their own cameras that they could feed into the same police department system? Or is that something that wouldn't be considered until this is up and running?
Well, from day one, we have always been asking for help from our community to help their law enforcement agency be successful. So we are always entertaining partnerships just as that. Our main concern would be. Our main concern would be just as we are held to a standard of transparency and held to a standard of operational accountability, we would ask the same of our citizens as well.
Okay. And then, so I understand these cameras aren't able to use facial recognition technology. Would there, is there any consideration otherwise to use that when it comes to return, regarding the real-time crime center and what's more broadly known as the Fusion Center? I understand the state police have the authority to do that now, and it's just been extended to local police departments. But in order to do so, they'll have to adopt either their own policies that's either meet the criteria of the state police or that provide better protections?
Yes. So I believe the question was, do we intend on using facial recognition?
Yes, that's a short one.
Yes. We have no plans right now to use facial recognition. However, you know, in our strategic planning, you know, we go where the technology helps us to be successful. And if that is an option for us two, three, five years down the road, I think it definitely has to be a consideration. But what we would like to do, as in all things, is partner with our community to identify useful tools to law enforcement. And then, once acquired, if acquired, share how we'll be using that technology and how it will enhance our ability to fight crime, specific emphasis on violent crime.
Okay. And maybe the final question, hopefully. I'll just, data retention. I understand that the company that provides these will only retain the data themselves for 30 days, and then they'll delete it from the cloud. But as a local department, has there been a decision to retain that data for longer? Because one of the items on here is 10 1 terabyte drives. And just wondering what the policy would be there?
Yeah. That's not associated with any of the license plate reader. It's just for other needs at the department as well. But I think here, what we would do is make sure we work with our legal team to ensure, first establish how long does the courts and the law say that we can keep it? And then kind of overlay that on our investigative needs. And certainly, we wouldn't go beyond what the law allows. And I think in the case of internally, we definitely wouldn't go any longer than investigative needs dictate. If there's no reason to keep someone stacked for 20 days, I'd much rather not keep it. But if there was a homicide that occurred and we're trying to retain that data until all of our detectives get through the investigative process of a homicide and the law allows us to keep it that long, certainly we would keep it that long.
Okay. I'll make my final question and see if the floor back everyone else.
Long agenda, Councilman.
What this intended to be used for traffic enforcement or really just be for investigative purposes? I understand this isn't meant to, it's not evidence or proof in itself. It's really just another investigative tool to allow the police department another notch in their belt in order to do their job?
Absolutely. It focuses on violent crime. We have just experienced one of the most violent years in crime that we have, to be exact. It's been the third highest murder rate in the history of our city. We do understand that there is something that we have to, we have to continuously look for ways to be innovative as opposed to some of the challenges that law enforcement has seen as it relates to crime. So we have to make sure that we are on the cutting edge of innovation to make sure that we're able to interrupt what seemingly seems to be the continuing cycle of violence that we are seeing here in our city.
Thank you. No more questions.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a comment for the chief. Thank you, chief. I want to get back to the acceptance and appropriation of the grant. I just want to say, I commend you for reaching out to your staff and your team, asking them what do they need in order to effectively do their job. And you're not asking for anything fancy, binoculars, flashlights. These are pretty basics, and I'm really happy that we have the extra funds for you to be able to do that. So I really want to say thank you, because you know, a lot of times we just spend it however we think it should be spent. But reaching out to your officers and your staff, asking them, and then coming back to this list makes perfect sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, I believe you're ready to call.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. We have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, amending, re-eranging certain sections of the 2022, 2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. And then the discussion by members of council. Sign on. Madam Clerk, please call over.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Before I get to the city manager, I want to remind council that we have some employees that look forward to meeting our new council member today. That starts at 3:00. We got three closed meetings. So just be cognizant of time as we go forward, because after 5:00, people leaving this building. So we want to make sure we can get there before that time. All right? Please recognize the city manager.
Yeah. After that, I have no comments. Thank you. Nothing. Thank you.
All right. I number eight reports of committees. We have none. Unfinished business, none. I number 10 is introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. I number 1101 is ordinance re-adopting and reenacting the Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979 as amended. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to re-adopt and reenact the Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any comments by the council? Heard none. Madam Clerk, please call over.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. I number 11 in motion, excuse me, and miscellaneous business by the mayor's office or members of council. Let me just state that I have a, I was talking about yesterday, I mentioned to the media about curfew with teenagers. And I'm not recommending, I want you all to look at an outline of things we can do. I think everybody should have a copy of it. And I'm just thinking, as I mentioned, again, that we need to be proactive. It's anything that we can be proactive and continue to look, as she said, to look for ways to strengthen our community and to make kids even more safer. So this is a discussion. This is an action plan I proposed. Want you all to look at it, digest it, and see, and these are some things I think could possibly work. But I wanted to make you all aware of it. This is not a voting matter. This is just a discussion matter on some things, because I want to make sure that our children are safe. And I refer back to Saturday night and the incident we had over on Melrose, where kids were just three. You know, I get confused on the number. I know I saw, I went by home yesterday and saw one kid, one young man was being treated at home with a gunshot wound. There was another one with grazed in the leg, and they were sitting there. And then I had a chance to go by the hospital and see the young man that was there that is fighting, actually fighting for his life. I mean, he's critical but stable, but there's no guarantee that, from what I saw and talking with his mother, and his mother, that he has, he has some serious injuries, serious injuries. And so I know and I got some information regarding what other cities, primarily in the peninsula region, that have curfews, Newport News, the Hampton, those areas. So just some thoughts for discussion, and possibly we could come back. But I want you all to view that and give me, share with us or have a discussion over what your thoughts are.
Is now the appropriate time? Is now the appropriate time to discuss this item?
Well...
Just briefly?
I think we got briefly, we can do it briefly.
I'd like the third item that you provide on here regarding increasing lighting. I'm reminded of a few comments that I heard while soliciting people's opinions on the technology that we just received. And a number of people responded that they are more concerned, they would like to see infrastructure go towards lighting in their neighborhoods and how dangerous and difficult that is. And it goes beyond just the safety with violence. There are a number of street lights that I see out throughout the city of Roanoke, sometimes right by pedestrian crosswalks that make it very dangerous for people while they're outdoors. I'd like to focus in that area. I even thought of some plan of national light out, so we can all go outside and find out where all of the lights are and then get them all done. But I haven't thought this whole thing through. I wasn't prepared to talk about it today.
Well, and I probably should give you more lead time. I just shared this. We can continue this, but I just wanted to talk about, we're talking to those violent prone areas where it's dark and those kind of lights. Take a look at that.
Of course. But my concern with the implementation of a teen curfew would just be that, right now, as my understanding is, one applies, I think, from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. That's correct? Or is it 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.?
I believe it's 11:00.
It's 11:00 to 5:00 a.m. And we'd be able to extend that to 6:00 in the morning, and it looks like 10:00 p.m. Before any action would be taken on that, that a public hearing be held? Because I know that there are exceptions for when people have employment, and they're under the age of 16, that it wouldn't apply to them. But there may be other costs to doing this that we're not aware of. And I'd just like to have, give the public an opportunity to provide feedback before we change any of the restrictions regarding it. And whether or not that change would be temporary or permanent, because where it's housed in our city code, it would likely be a permanent change. I don't know if we could adopt a temporary change in the curfew. Could we?
Yes, you can.
Any ordinance, we could put a timeframe or sunset on that. I've actually done that with a, prior in my career, have done that with a curfew ordinance because there was an increase in crime.
Those will be my only comments at this time.
Okay, I appreciate it. I don't want to get bogged down in the bureaucracy of this, because I think it's something that we need to look at and we'll talk about it. But I'm open for any concerns. All right, Ms. Moon?
Yeah, I will. I will. I'll just be brief, Mayor. The only thing I would say to this end, and Councilmember Pretty mentioned it, is just to have community engagement at that time to allow citizens to come and to have a public comment, period, and not a public hearing per se, but to receive a public comment so that we could hear from the public as to their thoughts on what we have here outlined for the implementation of a plan of action for gun and teen violence.
Do you want to take my data? I got here from the public since I mentioned it yesterday.
Right. And I've received some too, but I think for the record.
I understand. I understand. That's fine. And we'll do that. We'll do that.
And also, the other thing I would ask is that if the city manager at that time would be able to provide some data with regards to how effective change in curfew times have been in other localities, as you mentioned, the peninsula, but anything around here in the southwest section, southwest Virginia? And also, what the chief of police would say with regards to what that would impact, how that would impact staff with a shortage of police officers on the street? What does that mean and how we would implement it to keep from having racial profiling, that sort of thing, when you're trying to implement the curfew?
Well, you know, racial profiling has its effect, but it's obvious we need to do this in Northwest.
That's what I'm saying, but I just don't want the police officers, the parents, to say they are now profiling, you know, coming after my child. He was only doing thus and so. But I don't want to get bogged down in it. I was just more or less just saying, these are the kind of things I think at the appropriate time would be good for discussion.
Good. Okay.
And Mayor, number four, when you said establish council at neighborhood single-family forums, is that your intent for the community engagement?
Yes.
Okay.
To do it on Saturday and Sunday, because a lot of people can't come down.
Right. Okay. So you did include that. Okay.
Yeah. So we're going to have plenty of that. But my thing is, you know, I'm seeing kids walking out of the house and getting shot. Getting shot. And I want us to move on it, but I want us to talk more about it. But I don't want to get bogged down in bureaucracy about it. We need something. Let's be proactive, not wait till something happens. And I know there's some things here, again, I want, that's what I want. I want to hear those things from you. We want to be sure of what we're doing. But there is precedence for this. Now, there's a lot of major cities, cities outside that has this. And I can guarantee you, I think there'll be a lot of similarities, especially in some cities that have issues similar to what we do. But I would ask that if our city manager and attorney would take a look at, probably get data from either Newport News, Hampton, Ohio, that working, and how do they feel it's going in their community and those kind of things before we act. But I appreciate you. You all can send me the emails you have on it, your thoughts you have on it. And I, but I want to try to get something going, because I'm just, you know, looking at these kids yesterday, and these are the kids that are in our program. And if you all know what I mean, they're doing some good things. And so I just want to make sure they're safe. It's not punishment. It's saving people, saving kids. And the question again we asked is, Mom, and I'm going to say Mom, because I don't see a lot of Daddies. I'm going to say, Mom, do you know where your kids are at 11:00 and 12:00 o'clock on Saturday night? Basic question. Where are they for their safety? All right. Thank you, Congress. Take that and send me your email. I know you have some thoughts on it.
And Mayor, if I could, because I'll save Tim the time. If you all do have any comments that you would send to the mayor, please, if you would individually send them to the mayor and not to the entire body.
Okay. All right.
And Mr. Mayor, I just have one thing I would like to ask the manager, if I could. And this with regards to street lighting, especially the one I'm referring to is on Williamson Road. Looking at the thoroughfare, there are several, and I mean several, the street lights that are all, that I know Appalachian Power Company handles. But I think staff may need to go out and travel that after dark, pretty much. One primarily place is at the 711 at Oakland and Williamson Road. The street light is out there where the last crime just happened. There is no street light. And so with pedestrians crossing, it's dark. And you know, that's why I think a lot of issues come with the pedestrians.
We can definitely do that. I think if folks, just so people out in the public know as well, because as you mentioned, AEP, it's their street lights, and they'll come out and repair those. They have both, I think, a phone hotline as well as an online that if folks see. They're fairly responsive, but yes, we will also take a look, especially on the thoroughfares and stuff.
Yes, if you would be so kind as to do that, I would appreciate it. And last, Mayor, I would just like to wish a happy birthday to our new incoming council member, Luke Pretty. His birthday is tomorrow. And what a way to celebrate his birthday and coming in on council on the first day and having a birthday the next day.
Before anybody sings, her birthday is the sixth.
No.
Who's that?
Stephanie Moon's birthday is on the sixth.
So you got two January babies sitting up here now. But anyway, happy birthday, Luke.
Mayor, can I ask a question? And it relates to what you said earlier, and Tim, you'll have to help me here. You know, I know we've got three different, I think, closed session items that we needed to discuss. And I also know that you've got the reception. Do you want to, should we recess for the reception? Maybe pick a time to come back up here?
I think this...
We can do that as long as we come back in here to exit our closed meetings.
Yeah, and I would say, and I would say we try to, you know, pick a time to get back here from the reception so that it's not just...
To keep us in the corral.
So it's not just open-ended, see?
All right. We can...
Or should I say that other business later? Or a rapid action request?
Okay.
The first one regards the letter that everyone on council received and the third received from Dave Harrison. It's objecting to the conclusion of item A that was in the legislative agenda. And he asked for council to reconsider that item. But at the very end of his letter, is his last request, is that a copy of this letter he included in the record for the meeting for January 3rd, 2023? And I'd like to at least abide by that request if there's no objection, just for including the letter. just for including the letter in the record.
All right. Any thoughts on for members of council?
I would make that motion, if the motion is in order, or it could just be without objection. But I would ask that the clerk acknowledge receipt of the communication to Mr. Harrison, and that whatever action council take, which is to acknowledge receipt, and that it's to be received and filed more or less.
And then the final thought.
If I might just add one other thing, just so councils are aware. Did receive a call from the city of Lynchburg today asking if they could reference us in their legislative agenda on this particular item under A6, recognizing when I spoke with them, I said the no-knock version is gone, but they're asking permission to include Roanoke, that Roanoke has adopted this as part of their legislative agenda, and that they would like to add that language in there, and they're asking permission.
Is that a vote for this council to take?
Not necessarily a vote that would just, that's something they're doing just out of kindness. They don't have to ask, but they are.
I would communicate that I personally object to that.
Okay.
But if there's no vote of this council.
Well, I don't see why, if you want to be supportive, if the city wants to do that, wants to do that, I don't have any problem with it.
I just wanted all of council to know I've received that call this morning.
It's time. People are concerned with gun violence in Lynchburg, we know, is having trouble with that as much as we have, and it's an issue. And I'm thinking, I want to make sure, make sure that our police officers have the tools they need to do what we ask them to do in public safety, to deal with public safety. They need to have the tools, and so it's a tough decision, but I'm in agreement, I don't have any problem with that. Any thoughts?
Not on this item.
Pardon me?
Not on this. I just have one final separate thought.
I'm not turning you clear.
I have one final separate thought. Not related to what we're discussing now. An inquiry of the clerk, the item number four earlier, recognizing Joe Cobb as the vice mayor, did we have a motion and a second? I don't remember if we just went straight into the...
We did.
Okay.
Number four.
Yes.
It was approved by White Boyd and seconded by Ms. Moon.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
And before we adjourn, Mayor, just a comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Cobb, you may be able to answer this. This has been like December 30. They had announced that there would be another meeting for the redevelopment of Eureka Park, that survey, they're going to meet on January 24. Time and date to be determined, that was as of 12:30. Have they gotten a date as of yet? And place?
They did not have the time or the place as of last Friday, but I will check and see if I can find out.
Okay. I was just hoping that they did, and I can make a public announcement to try to encourage people to come out for those meetings.
Yeah, I think they're trying to relocate to a larger facility than they had at the Melrose Library. They're just working still and finding locations.
Oh, okay. That's fine. I was just hoping to be able to announce that on the diocese this afternoon. Thank you.
All right. We have no vacancies on certain authority and boards, commissions, committees to be appointed by council today, and we're going to be in recess for a welcoming group to introduce our new council members downstairs, and following that, we're going to reconvene for our closed meeting.
And you want to give us a time per our city manager?
A time to come back.
A time to come back, yes, so that we're not down there lingering for 30, 40 minutes.
Well, watch me, and once you see me leave.
Okay. So you, Mr. Cobb, I tried.
All right. Okay. We're going to go in recess, and let's go downstairs on second floor.